Meeting is being recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty one meeting of Yorktown zoning board of appeals. My name is Gordon Fine. I chair the board. Joining me tonight on the board is Anthony Tripoli, Bob Fahey, Bill Gregory, John Meistrick, our special counsel, Adam Rodriguez, our reporting secretary, Glenn Bailey, and our host tonight is Kira Bruner. Let me just read some opening comments. This meeting is being broadcast live on the town cable TV channels. If you would like to join participate in this Zoom meeting, click the registration link on the town's website calendar page for this meeting. All meeting participants will remain without video and on mute till their item is called in order to simplify the view on the screen. Those joining by computer can use the chat function in Zoom to contact the meeting host Kira if needed. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak during the public comment portion of an application, please raise your hand by clicking the raised hand button at the bottom of the participants list or send a chat message to the host. You may request to speak or have the host read your comments or questions. Use it on speaking until invited to do so by the chairman or host and identify yourself by stating your name for the record. If you are joining by Zoom by phone only, all phone calls will remain on mute in order to minimize background noise. Press star nine to raise your hand to the host to indicate you would like to speak. When you are invited to speak, please identify yourself by stating your name for the record. If you are watching this meeting on television or would like to comment on an item, you may call into the Zoom meeting using the phone number and meeting information shown in the host box on the screen. Remember to tell the host you would like to comment, click the raised hand button on the bottom of the participants list, send a chat message to the host using that button on the bottom of the Zoom window, or if you are on the phone, press star nine. First order of business is to set up next month's meeting. Next month's meeting will be held on July twenty ninth, once again on Zoom at six thirty. You must send out your mailings. You must send out the mailings between July sixth and July fourteenth. If you send out your mailings before July sixth or after July fourteenth, we will not be able to open your hearing next month. In order to determine who to send your mailings to, take your list of, take your packet down to the tax office, the one you received from billing department. There'll be a blank list there. Tell the person at the tax office you're sending out zoning board notices. They'll ask you for your address and then show you the names and addresses of those parties you have to notify. List those names and addresses on that blank list that we gave you in your packet and send your mailings to each of those individuals or companies or whatever the case may be. They have to be sent out by first class mail. You do not have to send it out by certified mail, but you must get a receipt of mailing from the post office. It's a simple receipt showing where it was sent and the data was sent. It only costs a dollar as opposed to about five dollars each except certified mail. Don't forget to post your sign conspicuously on your property. Prior to next month's meeting, you must submit your sign affidavit along with the photograph of the sign on the property along with the list of those you sent your notices to as well as proof of mailings to our legal department so that they may be reviewed prior to next month's meeting. That being said, the next order of business is to approve last month's minutes we presented earlier this week. Everybody's had a chance to go through them. Any comments, questions? Okay, a move that we adopt last month's meetings at the main minute. So I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, new business. Not law application for special use permit for the renewal of accessory apartment at twenty seven seventeen Quinlan Street. Anybody here on that application? Okay, that's going to be handled administratively and referred to the building department. Must though. Anyone here on that?
Yeah, second on it.
Application for rear enclosed porch for the rear out setback of thirty seven point five eight feet or a minimum of forty feet is required as per three hundred dash twenty one. That's a twenty six ninety one Farson court. Anyone here on that? We're gonna set that down for site visit. The board will do individual site visits. Refer to the building department. We'll also submit it to the planning department for them to let us know what the setback requirements are as well as lot area requirements for that area. And public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dominic, anyone here on that? Application to allow a second story addition with a front yard setback of thirty nine point four feet and a rear yard setback of thirty seven point one feet. Both require a minimum of forty feet. This is an existing house on a lot area of eighteen thousand three hundred and forty one square feet where twenty thousand is required. It's thirty two fifty one North Deerfield Avenue. Set that down for site visit. Refer to the building department. We'll also refer this one to the planning department to let us know what the setbacks as well as lot area requirements are for that lot. Lastly, a new business. We have Masterman. Anyone here on that?
You need a second on Dominic?
Yeah. But you gave it to me. All in favor?
I'm sorry. I did it mentally. Sorry.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Masterman. Application for second story addition with combined side yard setback of twenty nine feet, one inch or a minimum of forty is required at five hundred Manchester Road. Anyone here on that?
I am.
Okay. So this is.
Michael Piccirillo. Man, oh man.
All right, we're gonna set it down for site visit and refer to the building inspector. Anything odd we should know about this before we move on?
Just that Mike Piccirillo is handling it.
Yeah, the only, we had gone for a variance back in two thousand and thirteen with a previous owner.
Right.
So there's a, there's a old variance. The other, it's actually the other side of the house. So this is basically a second story addition on top of an existing, uh, first story.
So it's pretty. So I'm gonna also request a copy of the prior variance.
I submitted that in the packet.
Oh. Let's make sure we actually see it.
Oh, well, I submitted it. I think seven copies.
I'm not blaming you for anything. I'm just saying.
Okay, when is the site visit?
There's, there's no set date. We don't, we're still going out of.
Oh, you wander around. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks guys. Take care.
Thanks. Next up is Alec Tris LLC application to remove the condition in a previous DBA decision which prohibits the subdivision of this lot. If this is removed, a proposed three lot subdivision would be applied for. This property is located in R one ten zone at ten seventy five East Main Street. Who's here on that?
Hi, it's Joel Greenberg, architect.
There he is.
Here I am.
Okay, now last month we took your, we took all your mailings. That was all set up. So this is a two step process or possibly a one step process. Let me explain what that means. When you're asking us to remove a prior condition of the decision, the first step is the zoning board has to vote to first reopen the old decision. In order to reopen the old decision, it has to be unanimous vote of the zoning board. If one or more people on the zoning board denies that we reopen it, the application is just closed on the spot. If we move to reopen it, then we move on to the full public hearing where you can tell us what basis you have for us removing the prior condition. So first off, why don't you give us a preview of why you think we should reopen the decision?
Okay, as you probably know from the report that you got from John Tegger, uh, we did, uh, go before the planning board and there were certain requirements that they wanted before they even would allow us to go to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, one of the main things is they wanted to make sure that the lots as we propose, which are eighteen thousand square feet or twenty thousand square feet is required, were, uh, approvable by the Westchester County Department of Health. Uh, several weeks ago, we had, uh, testing done observed by, uh, Anthony Cunnie from the Westchester County Health Department and both lots, uh, were able to pass, uh, as far as septic are concerned and.
Let me, let me interrupt you for one basic thing. I know what you're telling us is what your application is for and what's gonna go on the property, but the first hurdle is tell us why we should even reopen the old decision. We have to get to that first.
Okay, okay. All right, I'll be, I'll be more brief then.
Because the old decision said no further subdivision.
That's correct. And, uh, again, uh, well, just to finish the comment, everything was approved by the Westchester County Department of Health. Uh, and these eighteen thousand square foot lots were satisfactory to, uh, take septic systems for a four bedroom house. Uh, the reason that we would like to have this, uh, this, uh, this, uh, removed, the fact that, uh, the previous owner had agreed to know for the subdivision is that, uh, again, if, uh, can I put these growing up because there's some pictures there that might be helpful to the board.
Well, not until you open the public here, Chris, considering whether we even should.
Okay, all right, very good. Anyway, make a long story short, uh, this is the only area on Frost Road uh, that is now, uh, basically wooded area. Uh, as you will see, if the board decides to open the public hearing again, uh, you'll see the several houses on Frost Road, uh, and we're just basically trying to continue that instead of having that big gap over there uh, by the curve, just before the curve in, in Frost Road. And, uh, we feel that, um, we can adequately, uh, show that these two lots are viable and I think this will be, uh, an asset to the neighborhood. So we would, uh, respectfully request that, uh, that can, that we open the public hearing to discuss the removal of that condition.
Um, anybody, I know that the documents for this application was submitted distributed last month. Anybody on the board have a copy of the prior zoning board decision? Andy?
Yes, I do.
Bill, do you have it there? I'm gonna see if Bill has it.
Uh, looking. I do have a copy. I have it.
Could you, just for the record, read us the old decision? I was gonna say, it's the current decision.
The decision was dated June fifteenth nineteen eighty one. Uh, and, uh, basically, uh, the, uh, decision was as follows. Upon reading and filing a certificate of notice, reports of the building inspector dated June, June twenty fifth nineteen eighty one, conservation board dated June second nineteen eighty one, tax assets dated June twenty fifth nineteen eighty one, and on report of the site committee and upon the testimony offered and received, public hearing of this application, it is found and determined as follows. The requested relief, although resulting in a twenty five percent reduction in the area requirements, is nevertheless in harmony with the surrounding area and exceeds the size of the surrounding lots. Applicants agree to stipulate that lot twenty four, the front lot, could not be further subdivided. In order to preserve the open shed and eliminate the dog leg of the lot lines, board and applicant agree to rearrange same. Such rearrangement results in lot twenty four point one being fourteen thousand forty three square feet and lot twenty four point two being fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty two square feet. Applicant presented proof of practical difficulty based on the above, the board, after due consideration, does grant the variance requested. Said variance is made expressly subject to the following conditions. No further subdivision on the lot facing East Main Street, lot twenty four shall be permitted. Shed shall be restored by July first nineteen eighty two. Applicant is amended, application is amended to rearrange the lot lines leaving one lot of fourteen thousand forty three square feet and one of fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty two square feet.
Okay, so the lot that you're looking to remove the condition on, is that lot twenty four?
That essentially is the lot twenty four, yes.
Okay. So we had a very similar application about a year or two ago in the same general vicinity. That was the Spirelli application. He also asked us to reopen the old decision uh, to consider letting him subdivide a lot. And it was the same basic decision where we said no further subdivision. Um, what the board did then is we, we allowed the hearing to be, we allowed the application to be reopened and then we heard it and ended up denying it. So the first step we have to do here is vote on whether or not we should reopen the decision. So based upon, and this is my own personal opinion, obviously the board can vote for themselves, uh, but based upon the prior experience we had where we at least let the applicant set his case forth, is I would move that we reopen uh, the prior decision of the zoning boards that the applicant could then let us, give us proof as to why we should remove the condition. So all in favor of reopening, uh, the decision, say aye.
Well, I have some questions.
I need a second on that too.
Before we, maybe before we get there, I'm sorry.
Questions that, yeah, before we get down.
Didn't, didn't we do it where we opened it specifically to look at removing the condition because there was the concept that we could, we didn't want to open the opportunity to negate the, the prior decision in any way, right?
That's what we're doing. We're opening up only for the sole reason of whether we should move, remove that condition.
Okay.
Okay, so there'll be a further investigation.
Well, no, it's, it's just that one condition.
Once we open it up, then we'll make inquiries as to.
Correct, as to that condition.
Whether or not we should remove the condition.
Correct, but first we have to open it up.
Okay, I understand the procedure.
I mean, I, I'm having a hard time understanding justification for reopening it. It, it seemed, it seems that it was the, the last decision was pretty concise. I mean, as to the reasons what they wanted to do. Um, what's changed that we should reconsider?
Well, since we haven't opened up the actual hearing yet, but if Mr. Greenberg wants to respond to that, again.
Again, uh, I would hope that, uh, the board would, uh, vote to open the public, reopen the public hearing. Uh, and I think, uh, once you do, and I can explain further exactly why we're doing this. Uh, and again, if you have, uh, you'll have on a share screen, you'll see some of the situations with the existing houses on Frost Lane and also, uh, what was there and that piece of property that we're trying to subdivide, uh, there was, uh, you know, a lot of.
That was there, all that was there at the last time this came up. Those same issues were there that presented the first time this came up in nineteen eighty one. Uh, what's changed in the neighborhood? Has anything changed that would require us to reconsider?
Ye- yes, as I said, the, the fact that this is, uh, open land, uh, the, uh, again, when, once you see the, uh, uh, pictures that I've, uh, will have submitted, you'll see that the, the street is a very quiet, nice, developed.
And it was in nineteen eighty one as well. It's what, again, what's changed?
No, let me just, so I can interject. What we had in the Spirelli matter, if I remember correctly, anybody could interject if they remember it differently, was there was some argument being posed, at least that when the first condition was set down, it was because there were no sewers in the area. Then it turned out later on, there are sewers in the area, but it turned out when we did our investigation into that application that that wasn't actually the case. But that was one of the bases of why the applicant said we should reopen it. Um, the reason being that we can now subdivide the land more because planning was said we can do it if we want to and, you know, put more houses on the lot. It's not really a condition as to a reason why we should reopen our old decision. Uh, but my personal belief is that the applicant wants, wants to try and prove his case. I'm, I'm not saying I'm gonna agree, but I'm okay with opening up, opening up.
I understand.
You don't, you don't have to agree.
I understand.
Vote, vote your conscience, but that's, that's my reason.
I understand. I understand. All right.
Well, in essence, we're giving him an opportunity to be heard.
Correct, right, right. Okay, okay. Then in that, in that instance, then I'll, I'll, I'll say yea.
All right, so let me make the motion again. I move that we reopen the prior decision of the zoning board for the sole purpose of reexamining whether or not that condition stating that there be no further subdivision be removed. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, so the application is now reopened. Mr. Greenberg, you can now present your argument as to why you believe we should remove that condition, but keep in mind uh, solely making an argument as to economic benefit to your client is not necessarily the reason why we should remove the condition.
That's not what I'm gonna try to explain to the board.
Okay.
Uh, can we share the screen so I can?
If you can do it, I can't. You can do it if you, if you know how.
I just made you co-host, Joel. So you should be able to.
Okay.
Do it again. Type one.
Where?
The second one down. Oh. Okay.
There we go. Okay, uh, all right, again, on the upper, uh, left hand corner, you see the entire lot as it is with the, uh, two family house with this board approved back several years, five or six years ago. Uh, there's also a cottage. Uh, again, uh, I don't know if you've all had a chance to read the report that was sent by, uh, by the planning board through, uh, John Tegger, but, uh, basically, uh, let's start by saying this. Uh, the, this particular area of, uh, Frost Road represents approximately between four and three units per acre. Now, if this is approved, I mean, and again, all we're asking for now is the condition to be approved. We have to, we're gonna go back to the planning board. The planning board may, may say no lots, one lot, two lot. But, uh, again, we just want to have the opportunity to have, to have the planning board review it. But the, the interesting thing here is that the, uh, apparently Frost Road was, was supposed to have anyways from three to four units per acre. Now, if you take the, the three units that we have plus the two units that we want to add, it comes up to five units and that would come out to three point zero two, uh, units per acre, which again is well within the limits of what Frost Road was supposed to be, number one. Number two, uh, when this was approved, uh, back in the nineteen, early nineteen eighties, uh, and again, uh, Bill read the, uh, uh, the, uh, decision in order, but I'd just like to read one part of it again. The requested relief, which is to reduce the twenty thousand square foot requirement down to fourteen thousand square feet, is a twenty five percent reduction in the area requirements, is nevertheless in harmony with the surrounding area and exceeds the size of the surrounding lots. And again, if you look at, uh, if you look over at my layout of the entire area and you read the bottom, it specifically says the analysis of all the surrounding lots on Frost Road, the average lot area is thirteen thousand. So the original subdivision of fourteen thousand, uh, was basically above what was required, uh, at the time uh, of twenty, of twenty thousand, uh, but was above the, uh, the units per acre. And we are of course asking for eighteen thousand square foot lots. Requirements have changed. Don't forget, this is now almost four, well, actually, it's over just exactly forty years later. And, uh, I, I think that, uh, the, the barn, which was in pathetic shape back then, has now obviously been removed. Uh, and the additional sheds have been removed and it's basically just a wooded lot. And again, if you look at the lower part of the drawing, you'll, you'll see the quality of the existing, uh, basically single floor ranch type houses, which is exactly what we want to do. Uh, and this is basically not, uh, being done to enhance the, uh, uh, the, uh, the owner, but basically to they add two houses to an area that is a very, very well developed and well-kept community and I think.
The owner's not gonna get any profit from the sale of the homes?
Well, I, I would assume he would, but I'm, but I'm, well, let me finish. Uh, also, I, I think, yes, of course, obviously he's gonna make money on those houses.
But that's, that's one of the reasons he's doing it. Apparently, he's not doing it for the benefit of the neighborhood.
Well, uh, I would say, I would not.
No one in the neighborhood is clamoring to that place to be developed is what I'm saying, as far as I know.
Let's be realistic, all right?
Well, let, let me, let me finish and then you can ask all the questions you want. Uh, I, I think what we're trying to do is, is to put, uh, two houses there in keeping with the uh, basically single story ranch type houses of the neighborhood. Uh, this will also basically complete the neighborhood. Uh, and I think that, uh, the quality of the work that, uh, the owner has done on the two family house and he's working on the cottage now has upgraded that area tremendously. Uh, he's also.
Well, I'm not, I'm not criticizing the work. I mean, he's done a couple of houses and they, but they both come out very well. I have no problem with this.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, yes, obviously he will make, he will make a profit on these, but I, I think the quality of the work and the quality of the neighborhood will be, certainly be enhanced if this is done, if this is done. And what we're asking now is the ability to eliminate that condition. So we'll go back to the, go back to the planning board and, and they will scrutinize it. I mean, they, they are the planners and I, I think, I think let them decide whether or not this is a good for the neighborhood, a good for the area and will actually enhance the area and not be a detriment to it. And I, and I think the fact that the variance that was granted, uh, you know, forty years ago, uh, even at that time, uh, the, this board, well, your previous boards obviously allowed a twenty five percent reduction, which we're now asking it for, number one. Number two, uh, if this is approved, where it's only a ten percent reduction, number one. Number two, and, uh, the whole idea is that.
But isn't a ten percent reduction something that's already been reduced?
Excuse me? What do you mean?
The lots was already reduced by the first zoning board decision, the current one.
Yes, down to fourteen thousand, which was a twenty five reduction. That's correct.
So now you're looking to square off a piece of that again.
But, but reducing the reduction to only ten percent, which is a lot different. And plus the fact that, again, if you go look through, uh, look through the, the area with all the lots that are existing already, you'll see that, uh, they're mostly in the twelve to thirteen thousand square foot so that the lots, if these are approved, will be actually exceed the average lot and will also be in keeping with what, uh, the planners decided way back when, back forty years ago.
But didn't, didn't those other lots exist at the time of this decision in nineteen eighty one?
Yes.
The other lots?
Yes, and I, I'm assuming that, that, uh, this board at that time uh, allowed the twenty five percent reduction because in effect those lots at fourteen thousand square feet were above the average of, uh, thirteen.
So what I'm saying is, there is nothing that the zoning board then didn't know that we know now. It's the same sized lots surrounding it. Nothing's changed as far as that's concerned. Those lots have not been diminished in size in any way, the surrounding lots, is what I'm saying. So in that sense, nothing has changed since nineteen eighty one. What I'm asking is, what do you know now that we didn't know then?
Well, I, I, I think that that particular area needs to ba- basically complete the, complete the street, basically to complete the street and to have in harmony with, uh, the additional two houses, which will basically, basically fill out that, uh, Frost Road, which uh, again, I think will enhance the neighborhood. It will, it actually will en- enhance the neighborhood instead of coming to this wooded area as you're coming around that curve. And I think would be enhance the area to have, uh, the additional houses, uh, again, in keeping with the, uh, with the, uh, architectural, uh, design of what's there now. And, uh, I, I think basically I don't believe, uh, that we have any objection from the neighbors that we haven't heard of, any, heard of any. Obviously, you'll ask for any, anyone that wants to speak on the, on the, on the subject, but I think we basically, uh, to the best of our knowledge, there's no one that we know of, uh, that would object to having these two additional houses and basically complete that street, that would complete that street and.
Are these, is this lot on sewer or septic?
No, this is on septic and as I mentioned before this, before the planning board, we even referred this to the zoning board. They requested that we, uh, do all the testing that is required by the Westchester County Department of Health. Uh, and it tested out beautifully. And if you look at the drawing, basically over here, this, these areas over here uh, show that, uh, these lots at eighteen thousand square feet, because there's all, already town water, we don't have to worry about separation to wells, uh, is enough septic area with a hundred percent expansion, uh, for four bedroom houses. In addition, the health department also required us to show that for some reason, if the existing, uh, two family house and cottage, if those septic systems fail, we had to prove to the health department that we, we have a hundred percent expansion, which is this area over here so that if God forbid those systems fail, uh, we can, uh, accommodate and put back those systems as they were before and, and still not encroach upon the two lots that we're asking, uh, asking to.
But given the fact that it can be done, the question is, why should it be done? Right.
I, I think.
And why do we say it shouldn't be done back then? Versus why we should say it shouldn't be done now?
Uh, I, I don't have, uh, crystal ball to find out what.
But that's, that's the hurdle we have is we can't overturn. We can't just overturn a decision because we feel like, oh, now it's the time to add some more houses.
I, I understand that, but I, as I, as I said, I, I think the area can accommodate it. Uh, it's the only section of the, uh, of that whole street which is, uh, basically vacant and, and wooded. And I, I think this will be an enhancement to the neighborhood and, you know, lots of things have changed in, in forty, in almost.
So, so to be clear, we're looking to add a house. This is the existing house on Main Street, the mansion and the cottage. So we're looking to put a house basically behind the cottage on, uh, to.
Right, yeah, this is the main, this is the main.
And that would be, and that would be highly visible from East Main Street.
Uh, actually, I, it's, it's actually quite a distance from East Main Street.
But there are no trees blocking the view. I mean, it's, it's, it's a clear shot.
The consideration is, like you say, no char- no character change. Um, that stretch of shrub oak is, is highly noted to be a very photographic area for commercial shoots and representations for the area. It's highly viable for the town of Yorktown as the way it is. So if you change the character by putting this house in this location, doesn't that change the character of the neighborhood? You say that something badly needed. I, I tend to disagree just looking at it. Is there a reason why we have to put three houses on this piece of property? Was it because there's some need to, to, uh, uh, to put houses there to square this and square the road? I mean, I, I'm not following the logic.
Well, I, I disagree. I mean, I, I think that, uh.
That's true. I expressed my disagreement as well.
I, I, I respect that, of course, but I, I think that, uh, again, uh, this is the only section of the, uh, of Frost Road, uh, where it's basically just vacant wooded area. Uh, and I, I think that, uh, if you look at the, again, the big map here, you'll see that there are houses that are along Frost Road that, um, uh, that are very visible from East Main Street and adding the two houses over here will basically be lining up with the houses directly across the street. Also, uh, you know, th- this board and all the planning board, all we're asking now is to allow us to at least, uh, attempt to convince the planning board that this is a good, a good for the neighborhood. Uh, also, uh, landscaping certainly, if, if it's some concern about the visibility of these houses, uh, you know, this board and or the planning board, if it, if it goes along with this. Uh, and at this board, I'm sure has done it in many cases to allow screening, uh, along these, along the property line so that, uh, you would see basically, uh, just vegetation and not the house so that.
Oh, I'm also, I'm not getting the argument that because this is the only wooded area left on East Main Street, we should develop.
No, 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 on Frost Road. I'm sorry.
Or on Frost Road. I mean, the same is, just because it's, it's undeveloped, doesn't mean we should have to develop.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. I, I think, I, I think this will be an enhancement to the area. And again, in forty years have gone by, and I, I think this is, at least give us the opportunity. To attempt to go to the planning board. And, you know, we still have to do storm drainage and a lot of other things that have to be done. The main thing that the board asked for, and they agreed, that based on the testing that we had done. That these two lots are viable from, as far as the septic is concerned.
Bill, can you go through the memos for us? And I know you have the file there.
I'm sorry.
Can you go through the memos for us? I know you have the file there.
We have a memo from the planning. Are you looking for the memo from the planning board?
Whatever memos are in the file, because you didn't go through them last.
Okay, it's a rather lengthy memo. Please excuse me. Uh, this is a memo dated May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, from the planning board, from zoning board. Planning board reviewed the above referenced ZBA application at their meetings of April twelfth and May twenty-fourth. The applicant is proposing a three-lot subdivision, creating two new building lots of approximately eighteen thousand square feet. And a reduced lot of approximately thirty-six thousand square feet, which is the front lot. The subject parcel, according to the applicant, houses three dwellings. Two in the historic main house and one in the detached two-story structure behind the main house. Subject parcel was created as part of a three-lot subdivision in nineteen eighty-one. Which also created two building lots of approximately fourteen thousand square feet each. Excuse me. These building lots were able to be created by virtue of the zoning board decision and allowing a lot size is less than the required twenty thousand square feet. The variance was conditioned by a restriction disallowing any further subdivision of the remaining one point six five acre parcel. Which is the parcel that is currently under consideration. Subsequent to that decision, and after the nineteen eighty-one subdivision was completed and built out. Request was made in nineteen eighty-five for special permit for professional office in a residence, which was granted by the zoning board. In nineteen eighty-six, an application was filed requesting the creation of a third dwelling uni- unit. Utilizing one or both of the barn house structures that existed at the time. This application was eventually withdrawn. Sometimes since the main house, sometimes since then, the main house appears to have been converted to a two-unit structure. The instant application is requesting that the zoning board rescind the condition of its nineteen eighty-one decision. Which restricted further subdivision of what is now the subject parcel. And granting area variances, allowing two new lots of approximately eighteen thousand square feet each. Planning board requested that the applicant investigate the areas and propose new lots for their adequacy in providing necessary sewage disposal. Infrastructure. The applicant conducted deep hole tests and percolation tests, which were observed by county health department personnel. Testing confirmed that there is potential to adequately serve two new lots. And the existing dwelling unit on the third remaining lot with onsite sewers disposal systems. While no required stormwater treatment was shown or proved out on any of these lots. Planning board does not, based on submitted data, have objections based on these technical considerations. Planning board knows the following with respect to density and community character. Residential area is generally planned at a density of four point four units per acre, as represented by the R one-ten zoning district. Subdivisions laying out this neighborhood were largely improved and filed prior to nineteen sixty-one. Built-out conditions of Dane Street and Frost Road were slightly less than four units per, four units per acre to three units per acre. All about built-out condition on the subject parcel will be three point oh-two units per acre. Representing five dwelling units on one point six five acres. This is representative Dane and Frost neighborhoods. Planning board points out, however, that the planning for these neigh- of these neighborhoods. Completed largely prior to nineteen sixty-one, did not anticipate nineteen eighty-one subdivision. Or this proposed subdivision, together representing an additional four lots and five dwelling units over the original planned condition. Planning board, in its November tenth nineteen eighty-six memo responding to the request to allow the third dwelling unit on the subject parcel. Recommended against granting such requests citing the issues of overcrowded density. Notwithstanding the foregoing analysis, this continues to be a prime consideration of the planning board of this and similar requests. And the planning board is aware and respectful of planning of prior. Planning efforts and decisions. As was similarly, similarly put forth in the nineteen eighty-six memo, the planning board suggested. Planning, zoning board determines to approve this request, the following recommendations be considered. One, the zoning board consider only the request to rescind the condition restricting further subdivision on the subject parcel. Request for relief from the required lot size of twenty thousand square feet on each of the two new lots is premature. And should be set aside until the planning board reviews and considers all aspects of the proposed subdivision. Including lot size, lot count, lot configuration, building sighting and setbacks. Planning board will only review the subdivision application if zoning board determines to remove the limiting condition earlier described. Limiting further density and or subdivision of the rate original, this is number two. Limiting further density and or subdivision of the remaining original parcel. Any further density will have implications to not only the interior neighborhoods of Frost, Dane and James Streets. But also to the character of the East Main Street corridor. And signed by John Tegg.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, that according to that memo, although the planning board has asked the applicant to show that they can do this. The planning board has not yet approved it.
No, of course, they, and they, and that's why they, they don't want you only to, uh, to consider removing the condition. Then we would go back to the planning board and it would go through a complete and full review as to whether or not this is viable. I think, again, if you read some of the in- information on the memo, and again, I mentioned it already before. Is that this particular area of Frost and Dane, Frost Road and Dane Street. Were, uh, on, as far as the master plan was considered for four to three units per acre. And based on, on what we're proposing, we're at three point two units per acre. So I don't think that we're, we're not overdensifying the neighborhood. And I, I, again, I, I think this will be an asset to the neighborhood. Again, forty years have passed, forty years have passed. And, you know, uh, un- units like this are certainly in high demand in this particular area. It's a beautiful area of, of Yorktown, and it's got the library direct, diagonally across the street, and it's, it's got a lot going for it. And I think it'd be an asset to have these two additional houses. Done by a contractor who has certainly proven his, his ability to produce. Very well-built and very well-architecturally designed buildings. And, and I think he's proven that, and I think this, again, would be an asset to the neighborhood. So all we're asking is to, we have, if this board can approve removing that condition, we just ask to go back to the planning board. You know, after a review, the planning board could say, you know, you know, we don't think you should get any variances. You have to have twenty thousand square feet, blah, blah, blah. Or they may say it's fine the way it is. So, what we're asking is the ability to, to prove from a planning standpoint that this, these, uh. The subdivisions, proposed subdivision is viable.
Any other memos in there?
What's that?
Billy, any other memos?
Uh, that's the only new memo that we received.
And nothing from the building department?
I don't, I'm not aware.
Okay. Nothing, no, no public comments in there?
In the pack, I'm sorry.
No public comments in there?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay. Anybody here, anybody want to comment on this from the public?
I have a, Gordon, I had a question of Mr. Greenberg, because I'm still having trouble. Understanding how this is an asset to the neighborhood. I've been, been down that street numerous times. There's a little bit of green belt. Which I consider an asset to the neighborhood. So how does removing the green belt and putting two additional houses in there. Be, you know, characterized as an asset to the, to the neighborhood?
That was my point earlier. I agree. Good question, John. Thank you.
I'll try to answer that question. Uh, again, uh, if, again, if you look at the neighborhood, and I'm sure most of you, most of the board members have gone up and down that street. You'll see it is very well landscaped. All the houses are, are a beautiful landscape. Have annuals and perennials and trees. And I think that the answer to your question, instead of having that wooded area, to have, you know, two families moving into Yorktown. With, you know, well-developed and lan- landscaped properties. I think will be an asset to the neighborhood, not a detriment at all. And, you know, if there's concern from this board or from the planning board about visuality. I think land, you know, permanent landscaping will resolve that problem very easily and.
Well, we can't, we can't control what an owner of the property, the dude whose property in the future, whether it's well man- landscaped to begin with, doesn't mean it will be ten years from now. But the trees will still be the trees.
Agreed. But a- again, and I'm sure this board, as I, I've been before many other zoning boards and certain, when variances are granted. Certain landscaping things are required. And mo- most of them are usually not deciduous. So they're year-round lands, you know, we're, we're, year-round, you know, situations where they will block, block views and keep.
I mean, the buil- the building department loves nothing more than to go out on a regular basis and count shrubbery on people's property. Make sure they're in compliance.
How that happens, right? Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I think the, I, I think what the memo from the planning board said expresses a lot of the concerns that we're raising here. Again, it's not maybe within our authority to, to, to rule on. But the, the density issue, the appearance from East Main Street, all those issues are being touched on in the planning board's memo. So as far as what happened forty years ago, I'm really tired of hearing that. That's forty years ago. The density issue was raised then. It's still an issue. It hasn't changed. That's, that's immaterial as to, as to what goes on with, with landscaping or whatnot, immaterial. The density issue remains, the views from, from East Main Street remains. And the number, rumors, other issues that were raised by the planning board still remain. So as to how we want to go ahead and proceed, I'm open for suggestions as to how we're gonna do that. But as far, again, I'm really, I'm not interested in what was forty years ago, or, or what remedies we're gonna make with landscaping. It's immaterial.
And as far as any decision from us, we can't limit any, we can't limit or, or put condition. All we're doing is saying whether we're gonna reopen. Or pull that condition or not.
Exactly.
We can't pull the condition, so you got to landscape.
No, no, I, I, that's, yes, you're right. That's, that would be up to the planning board. And if it turns to the point where we have to come back to the variances, again, there, it can be conditioned. Whether it'll be there in ten or twenty years, you're right.
Let me, let me.
I was just saying, let me say one more thing. I think if you see what's going on in that neighborhood, I think it would not be, uh. I, I, I would doubt if those properties would deteriorate. Because there are, as Mr. Faye said, they're at the entrance to that neighborhood. And I think it would be wise to anyone that, that, if this is approved to, that moves there, to keep that area. Because, you know, eventually they may want to sell it too, so.
That, of course, that is not under our control, unfortunately.
Understood. But I'm, I'm just trying to bring out that we do have reasons to, to. I, I think they, anyone that moves there, if this is approved, would have a good reason to keep it well. And, and of course.
Let me just, let me interrupt here. Is anybody in the public want to make a comment?
No one's raised their hand. So at this time, I don't see anybody.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have any additional comments?
So, you know, we don't really know why exactly they put these conditions on. We're assuming it's density, and it's probably a very good assumption. But, you know, we, we just don't know enough as to why it was ever put in place to remove it, right? So, unless someone tells us, there was, there was septic or whatever, you know, like sewers weren't there, and now they are. Like, we don't have anything really concrete, you know, to, to do anything with, as far as I can tell.
The, the, the one, the, one of the things I'm struggling with too is that we had this very similar application a couple of years ago, the same area. Um, and it was the same argument, basically. And we denied it. Because there was no reason given why we should change the prior zoning board's decision, other than the fact that the applicant wanted to put two more houses on the property. You know, so I, I see.
I'm not aware.
I don't see a difference in this case.
Well, I, I, I don't know that particular case.
It was Spirelli, two, a couple of years ago.
Oh, I, 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 I think you mentioned it the last meeting, so I am aware of that. Uh, but I don't know that the conditions of that particular request are.
Was also no further subdivision.
No, I understand that. But was he asking for a subdivision? Was he asking to put more houses on the same lot?
It was this very similar application, but, but the basis really of our denial was that there was nothing shown saying. Why we should remove the condition, other than the fact that he wanted us, he wanted to put another house on.
Well, in, in closing, I would just say that at least give us the opportunity to, you know, the planning board may come back and, and. Come back with the same situ- same solution or the same reasoning that you have, or it may not, but.
The, the problem with, the problem with, the problem with giving you the opportunities, you say, is that we've already denied it to another applicant for the same reason. And we kind of, we open it up, any, anytime somebody wants to, you know, reopen an old decision. They just have to use your argument then of, we'll just give us the chance to explain this to the planning board, and that kind of says, what do you need us for?
Yeah, but I, I, as I'm sure you, you have, all of your members have been on the board many years. Each case should be looked at on its own merits, not.
It is on its own merits, we also have to look at precedent.
Well, I, again, I would just request that at least give us the opportunity to go before the planning board. I, I think, you know, the planet, the memo that John wrote, uh, does have some positive information on there. As far as the density is concerned, I think that is not an issue anymore, because we're at the low end of the density that's, that was proposed for.
Well, I don't know about that, because the, the first lot has basically three dwelling units. And, you know, I, I think that that enters into the picture here, right?
Right. But at this point, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna move to be closed and reserved on the application. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now that it's closed and reserved, I'll ask the board, do you want to move on it now? Do you want to wait till the end of the meeting, or you want to wait till next month? You tell me. I prefer that we move on, take care of the other applicants, and we'll handle this at the end of the meeting.
And we'll handle this at the, either at the end of the meeting, we'll discuss that further.
Okay. So we're gonna adjourn this till at least the end of this meeting, then we'll determine what we're gonna do with the application. But right now, it's closed and reserved.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have Carvallo. That's application to subdivide a lot, creating two lots under required ten thousand square feet at sixteen eighty-one Summit. That's requested adjourned by the applicant, so we'll adjourn that. Next is Grace, application allow caretakers cottage. Nine fifty-nine However Street, application has been requested to be adjourned by the applicant, we'll adjourn that as well. Hey, we have O'Neil. Anyone here on that? O'Neil?
Yes, I'm here, Kathleen O'Neil.
Application for special use permit for renewal and accessory apartment. Okay, so Neil, you want to give us your name for the record, please, although you just did?
Kathleen O'Neil.
Okay. This is a existing. Apartment. We have a memo from the building department dated June fifteenth. They did their inspections, there are no changes, they're in compliance. Anybody, uh, public comments, Kira, on this one?
I don't see any at this time.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any comments or questions? There are no changes. What's that?
There's a, I think there's a memo in the file, did we just?
I just read the memo.
I'm sorry, I'm, I was looking, I was looking ahead. Yeah, okay, no, I have no objections.
All right, then I would move that we grant the application for renewal of the special use permit for accessory apartment at three seven one nine Mill Street for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone here on short?
I'm here, my name is Denise Perigino.
Okay, application for renewal of the special use permit for accessory apartment at thirteen hundred Baldwin Road. Could you please give your name for the record, please?
Denise Perigino, I'm Mrs. Short's daughter.
We have a memo from the building department dated June fifteenth. They did their inspection, no changes, they're in compliance. Any public comment on this one, Kira?
No, none at this time.
I see no other memos in the file. Anybody on the board have any comments or questions? Okay, we move that we grant the application for special use permits for new accessory apartment at thirteen hundred Baldwin Road for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. How about Ahern? Anyone on that one?
I'm here.
Okay. Did I say it right, Ahern?
It's Ahern, but that's okay.
I always see the one way, the other, I usually say it wrong. Application for special use permit for renewal accessory apartment at twenty-one oh-three Laurel Court. Could you please state your name for the record?
Lorraine Ahern.
We have a memo from the building department dated June fifteenth, no changes, they're in compliance. Any public comments, Kira? Any public comments, Kira?
I don't see any, no.
Anyone on the board?
Nope.
Okay, I'm moving that we grant the application for the renewal of the special use permit for accessory apartment at twenty-one oh three Laurel Court for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey. And Aprouzis?
Hi Gordon, Steve Tetra.
If, this is, let's see, application for proposed deck in existing pool with a rear yard setback of six feet, minimum ten is required. At three forty-one Smith Road. Wanna give us your name again for the record?
Sure, David Tetra, architect representing the homeowner.
Hey, you wanna run us through your application?
Sure, Kira, can I have the?
Yep, I just made you co-host.
Thank you.
Well, is, is that, oh, is that the addition in the picture we got there?
Okay, so we have. Uh let's see, what do we have here? Okay, so we have the properties on the corner of Gomer Street and Smith Road. And the owner had received a pool permit, they installed the pool. But as it turned out, the installer had placed the pool a little too close to the property line. Um I was asked to come in and design a deck for the project. And when we were doing the layout, we realized that there might be an issue with the zoning requirement here. Um so we got a brand new survey and it turns out that, yeah, the pool was too close to the property line. Um the project is a, an above-ground pool, I'm sorry, a deck for an existing above-ground pool. With a pool gate and steps that are leading down to the existing driveway.
Do you have the, you had a, I saw an aerial photo, the Google photo of the property?
Uh, yes. So, um, you got that, Bob?
Yep, I'm seeing it.
Okay, so uh, Smith Road and Gomer Street. And the pool is kind of, whoa, not really where the arrowhead is, but kind of in this area here between the arrowhead and this uh. Uh gravel, um, like fire pit area.
Okay.
Uh there's an existing um, buh 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 vinyl paddle fence that runs along between the property lines. And it actually comes just past the pool a little bit to give it uh privacy to the neighbors.
And that, and that's, and that's, and that's the, this current applicant's fence? It's not the neighbor's fence?
Um, you know what, I'm not sure if it's theirs or their neighbor's.
Okay.
Uh, this is Steve Aprouzis, um, I can, on the whole more, that is actually the, the neighbor's fence.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Problem.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's like the meat and potatoes of it.
Okay.
Looking for a four-foot variance.
Yes.
Alright.
How high is that fence?
Uh, the, the, the fence between the properties?
Yes.
Six feet.
How high is the pool and the deck?
The pool is an above-ground uh fifty-four inch high pool, the deck is gonna be at. The level of the pool. These two sides here are gonna have a standard thirty-six inch high. Um, like picket-style guardrail. We're planning on putting a solid fence along this side here for privacy from, from Smith Road.
And the above-ground pool, the walls of the pool act as a fence for color purposes as well, I believe.
Correct.
And uh, but on this side with the deck closest to the yard, are the people on the deck going to be able to look into the yard?
Here?
Yeah, they stand here, if they stand, if they stand. By, on the deck at the pool and near the fence, are they be, are they gonna be able to look into the neighbor's yard?
Um, let me just pull up the picture here and see what it would look like in terms of the, the extent of that fence. Oh, I don't have any photos offhand.
I mean, I, I was there today at the site visit and that's kind of my impression is if you're standing on a pool deck right there. You're basically towering over the privacy fence, so that is a bit of a concern there. Um, you know, the pri- privacy fence is quite tall, I would say it may even be above six feet. Uh which actually is probably a good thing in, in this case.
But even if you move the pool back four more, the deck four more feet back off the, off the fe- fence line, you're gonna have the same issue.
Doesn't make much of a difference, you're right.
Is there a possibility of screening it? It's like, could you put Argo Vitae in that would, that would hide that?
It's, it's a possibility, I believe, uh, do you guys have a, a, a letter from the neighbor?
I was gonna say, there's a, there's a notation on my file that there's a comment from the neighbor, but I don't have a copy of it, I don't know if, if it exists. Somewhere with the neighbors online and wants to interject.
Um.
It, it should be on the Dropbox if anyone has access to that.
Oh, cause the note said it's not in the Dropbox.
Okay, there is a, there is a uh handwritten note at the bottom of the noticed interested parties. That went to one of the neighbors. And uh I'll, I'll read it for you, please be advised that we have no objections to this project. And it's signed Mary and James Murphy with the address three five six Smith Road.
And where would that be in relation to this house?
Yeah, further down.
It's next to it, not behind it.
Yeah, the, the one that's uh maybe in question, I believe would be a Gomer Street.
Read the address, yeah.
I, I may have a copy of that uh letter on hand, if you wanna give me a second to check my, now I can pull that up.
While he's doing that, we have a memo from the building department dated.
I, I did find a memo, I'm sorry, I think.
I was reading it, there's a memo from the building department dated June fifteenth, uh they had no objections.
So, the one that I'm looking at is a neighbor on Gomer Street, thirty-two fifty-nine.
Oh, I don't have that, why don't you read it?
Uh hello, my name is Annabelle Aguilar and my residence for the past twenty years is currently thirty-two fifty-nine Gomer Street. Here in Yorktown Heights. The reason for this letter is to let you know that I am fully aware and in agreement of the size and distance of the pool deck. My neighbor Stephen Aprouzzi is in the process of getting approved. He resides at three forty-one Smith Road property adjacent to my, to me on the left side of my property. Please take this letter in consideration on your decision for the approval. If you would like to get in touch with me, here's my phone number. So I, I believe that would be the, the. Neighbor we're looking at.
Gomer Street address, it would be the neighbor behind, but is it the one directly behind or is it to the side somewhere?
Well, she said it, that he's on the left, I, you know, that's funny, I mean, if she's looking out her front door, then yes, uh if she's looking at her house, I'm not sure, right? But I, I.
That is, that is the property that is um bordering me on that fence line.
Okay.
That's good.
Hey, okay, alright.
Anybody on the board have any other comments? Alright, then I would move that we. Grant the application for proposed deck in existing pool with a rear yard setback of six feet, minimum ten is required. At three forty-one Smith Road with usual stipulation that this pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line. And that the pool and deck be built in substantial conformity with the plans submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Yes, yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, a, a que- a question just before we continue. Can, uh, when you get a situation like with a swimming pool, they usually have like a thirty-year life. Can you condition the variance to run with the life of the pool?
You know, we used to do that with sheds, it became very difficult to enforce, cause who knows when someone replaces it.
Right, okay.
And again, who's, who's, has the burden of trying to figure that one out?
Yeah, right, and I, I was just a, just a question.
No, and we used to, like I said, we used to do that with sheds, it just became untenable.
Yeah, I mean, like a swimming pool doesn't last forever and once the pool is gone, you know.
Yeah.
Does, you, do you lose the variance? I guess not, you know, that's where it's at.
Okay, let's move on to our next pool, Marino. Anyone here on that?
Hello, how are you?
Okay, application install a pool in the front, in the front yard where forty feet is required and thirteen feet five inches is proposed. And existing fences six feet six inches in the front. Side yard where four and a half feet is allowed, and a shed six point, six feet six inches off the property line with ten feet required. Thirty-seven sixteen Oriole Court. Please use your names for record, please. Just state your name. Andrew and Marret Marino.
Can you hear us? Andrew Marret Marino.
Okay. And you wanna give us a brief rundown of what your application is for?
Um, so basically, we live on a corner lot, so. It appears it is our backyard, but since it's a corner lot, it's the front yard, so we're requesting to have the pool. Um, ten feet where forty feet is allowed, but it, it really is behind, if you look at the pictures that we provided. You can see exactly how far off the street and it's behind the fence.
Let me see if those are in the Dropbox that I have.
There should be like five pictures.
If you want, I can probably try to attempt to share it here.
Yeah, see if you have it, John.
Appreciate it, I'm sorry.
Uh, Kira has to enable me to be a, uh, sharing, I guess.
Yep, you're good to go, John.
Okay. So, I had been scrolling ahead, so let me go back to uh where the pictures start. So, I think this is what the applicant was just describing, the corner of uh. Oriole and Barger, the tall hedges, and there's a fence behind it, so interior to that is where the pool would be.
I, I actually saw that today and it's, you know, the, the pictures are one thing, but when you come down Barger Street, you, you can't even see it.
Yeah, it's very, if, it's very well screened, I will agree with that. Um, so this is inside, so you can see the hedges kind of on top of that fence.
Right.
Uh, all that's screened from the road. Again, same, same basic principle here, um. You know, I guess just my, my view, you know, like what Bob just said, just driving by, it's like. As screened as we've ever made anybody do anything, so it is very good screening for, for what they're trying to do. I think the fence is also too high or something, is that?
Yeah, and then the shed. I think the fence height, the fence height, the fence height kind of goes along with what they're looking to do, so.
Right.
That ten foot, that's not the height of the fence, is it?
No, that's the distance, the pool is off the uh, off the property line. So I think that's the end of the pictures at least, this.
Okay. Uh, we have a memo from the building department dated June eighteenth. Since permits and digital compliance are issued to this property, appears there may have been an error, this variance would correct any errors. Let's see whether they uh, real disagrees, it's basically a statement. Any public comment, Kira?
No, I don't see any at this time.
Anything else on the board? Alright, from looking at the photos of the neighborhood, I mean, it doesn't look like the pool's gonna have any adverse effect on uh, anybody. Based upon the current screening, so I'm gonna propose that grant the application to install a pool in the front yard. Where forty feet is required and thirteen feet five inches is proposed, and existing fence of six feet si- six inches is in the front side yard. Where four s- feet six inches is allowed, and a shed six feet six inches off the property line where ten feet is required. With the stipulation this pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line. I'm also gonna put in the stipulation that the cu- current style of fence and screening be maintained. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey.
Thank you so much, everyone.
When's the pool party?
You guys can come over anytime.
You gotta dig, you gotta dig.
Your house, Bob. It's at your house, Bob.
It's my house, yeah, yeah, okay.
You better give us your address.
Clo- clothing option.
Not in everyone's case, Bob.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, no one will come if they know that's the case with me, I guarantee.
In some cases, it's preferred.
Alright, let's move on before we all get into trouble here.
Thank you, guys, take care.
You're welcome.
Good luck with that.
Thank you so much.
Next is Distelhurst, anyone here on that?
Yes, I'm here. Heidi Schneider.
Application for proposed accessory structure with a side yard setback of ten point four three feet. Excuse me, or minimum fifteen is required and combined side yard setback of thirty feet, thirty point six four feet. Or minimum forty is required at five hundred York Hill Road. Could you please give us your name for the record?
Heidi Schneider, I'm the architect for George Distelhurst.
Hey, you wanna run us through the application?
Sure, so if. You allow me to share, I can show you what I have.
Okay.
Hold on.
Yep, Heidi, I just made you co-host.
Okay, good. Now, let me see. Okay, so, basically, here we go.
What's, what's the nature of the accessory structure?
Download this, yes, so, we are proposing. A twenty-two foot by thirty foot um accessory structure. The accessory structure is the size of the two-bake garage, we're using one part of the. You know, one part is basically a garage, a one-bake garage. And the second part is going to be a gym and a small home office space. And um, the idea was to bring it, you know, uh fairly close to the house. And also, right connecting to the existing, existing driveway. Which of course, then, if you look at the, the way the house is designed. Doesn't really allow us to go all the way into the backyard with the structure. Um, so, we kept it to a minimum, meaning. You know, we really didn't wanna go further than twenty-two feet and we also were willing to overlap it here with the, with the. Existing residence. Um, and it will be, you know, with shorter than fifteen feet. And so, let me, let me show you how it's gonna look, I mean, it's, it's conforming with the neighborhood. Because we took some pictures, which unfortunately, I think, didn't bring with me, but we took pictures of the neighborhood. And it is a very common picture to actually see. Um, a, a two-bake garage right next to, like an accessory structure right next to the main residence. On York Hill Road.
Would you, wanna put the plans up on the screen?
Excuse me?
Would you put the plans up on the screen?
Or did I not?
No.
No, we haven't.
Oh, you haven't seen, oh, okay, I thought I'm still sharing here, hold on.
So.
You've built our anticipation, our enthusiasm to see it.
Oh, oh, sorry, yeah, I, I keep looking at it, of course. So, sorry about that.
We're, we're, we're waiting.
But now you're seeing it, right?
There, oh, there, there we go.
There it is.
Thanks for telling me, yeah, so, then let's start over again, because I've been looking at this for a while here, so. Um, okay, so here is the, the floor plan. And you see, so this is the existing driveway. And um, here's the, the one-story accessory structure that we're proposing. Um, it's a one-bake garage, you have the small gym area here and a small home office. And to the left here, you see the existing residence. And we're gonna have a covered walkway, um connecting the house to the accessory structure. And um, so let me also show you how it's gonna look from. The side and road here, so we have the side elevations here. Um, so, the front here being to the left. And then you see, you know, what the neighbor's gonna see, basically, where you have the, the side yard on one side. Which is the one where we're too close, so we are supposed to be fifteen feet away, but we're only ten point four six feet away. And here you see the front. And um, we were, you know, we also tried to make it. You know, a little more, a little nicer than just a, a two-bake garage look. So, um, you see, you know, the windows for the gym. And here is the garage with the small roof overhang. And um, on this side, this is the rear, rear yard view. And then you have the other side view here, which also connects the gym to. The small patio which has been here all along. So, basically, that's the, that's our proposed accessory structure.
Uh, there's a memo from the building department dated June fifteenth, and one of the things they point out is that there's a shed. Under a hundred square feet that needs to be removed or relocated, it's relocated, no permits required.
Yes, so that one will be relocated, and I do believe George is also part of this. Yes, so that one will be relocated, and I do believe George is also part of this meeting, and he can probably um. Confirm this, but he told me about the visit, and he, we already had discussed it, that he will be moving the shed.
So he's gonna move that into compliance with setbacks.
Yes, that's correct, this is George Distelhurst, I'll be happy to move it, no issues.
Just make sure you know what the what the setbacks are for it.
No worries, got it, thank you.
Alright. Cause if you move it, then they come back out and measure again, and it's all back in front of us again, so.
Well, it's it's actually rubber made, so it's coming apart, so it's easiest.
Just gonna say, you know, measure twice, move once.
Thank you, Heiki.
Sure. Any public comment, Kira?
Nope, I don't see any at this time.
Anybody on the board have any comments?
I'm I'm just curious as to why the buildings are not joined and we have an open breezeway between the two buildings, is there a reason for that?
Um yes, so if we're going back to the floor plan, there is. So here you see, that's the driveway here.
Right.
This part, and the driveway right now basically goes to pretty much the end of the house to here. Um so to to put the accessory structure right next to the house would really mean that. You know, you're cutting down on your driveway, and also there is an existing garage, which has not been used as a garage, is. On this side, I believe I showed you one of the site here. So this is what you would s- what you see right now. If we would move it closer, you would really cover, basically cover the windows and also. Come very close to the existing garage door.
Also a problem with the roofline versus the pre- the existing structure, wouldn't you?
That as well, and also you you would not have any access to the little patio, which is right in between.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Got it, makes sense, thank you. Hey, that being said, I would move that we. Grant the application for a proposed accessory structure with a side yard setback of ten feet, ten point four three feet where minimum fifteen is required. And a combined side yard setback of thirty point six four feet, minimum forty is required. The stipulation of the existing shed be moved into compliance, that the structure be built in substantial conformity to the plans submitted. And the variance is the requested variance only, not the remainder of the property line, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Hey, next is Dwyer.
Robert Keeler, the architect.
Okay, so there are two app- there are two applications here, I'm gonna read them both at the same time. First is an application for special use permit for a proposed accessory apartment on the first floor, where it's required to be on the second floor. The second one is constructing accessory dwelling with a side yard setback of five feet, where minimum fifteen is required. And a combined side yard setback of twenty-five point six nine feet, where minimum forty is required. And to allow the accessory apartment to be on the first floor, where it's required to be on the second. This is a five twenty-four York Hill. Wanna give us your name for the record, please?
Uh Robert Keeler, architect.
And I'm Joanne Prisco, sorry.
Thank you. Here, if you wanna save some time and just make the the architect the co-host, you can show us the plans.
You got it.
Go ahead. Give us your application. This is Keeler, go ahead.
Yeah, so you guys are gonna see a little deja vu from that last application, it's very similar, other than the use of the. Uh accessory structure, and it's actually attached, I don't know if it's considered accessory structure. Um but we are proposing a mother-daughter type addition uh connected by a breezeway. Um I believe the house that was on the previous application is very similar, where there's a garage here. Um and we are proposing. Very similar to the last application to keep the access to an existing patio. And therefore, the addition would be off to the back of the driveway. Uh with the proposed five point one two uh offset from the side yard. If we go down through. So this is a floor plan, this is the existing dwelling, this is the backside of the driveway here. Um with the access to the rear yard, we're gonna have a little landing into um the first floor. Uh which is a one-bedroom apartment. And a small uh patio area at the rear, there will be a uh mechanical area. In the cellar. Here, so that's the rear stair that we show on this plan here. Roof plan, and these are some elevations.
Where's your parking area for the accessory structure, for the accessory apartment?
So there are. Two spaces in the driveway, and there's also a garage space underneath the existing dwelling.
Okay. And the entranceway to the accessory apartment is where?
It is in the rear of the existing dwelling, attaching to an existing patio.
Do we have a survey for the property, uh showing what's on either side of of? What the neighbors' properties, how close the neighbors?
Uh yes, I can, I can share that screen.
How large is this property that's on?
This property is. Twenty thousand five hundred and eighty-one square feet.
Was that a half acre, a little bit more?
Sorry about that, okay.
So we are.
So this is the property, you have the neighboring property here. And here, and the proposed addition would be here at the end of the driveway.
That house next door to the right, is that a pool in the back or an accessory building of some kind?
I believe.
I can't get, I can't, those are those are little blue circle, I can't tell if it's water or something else.
It's a helipad, they have a private helicopter.
It's a koi pond.
Okay.
Is there a fence between the two properties?
Right now, there is a chain link fence, and we are proposing to have uh put a privacy fence up along.
You know, it is free variance to the fence height, though.
No.
And and the fence is yours or your neighbors?
I believe that fence is the neighbors', but Joanne can confirm.
I believe the fence is the neighbors', and I think they have some wood slat parts between right at the edge of where their property is. There's chain link like the whole length of the property, but where their house and pool is, I think there's some wooden fence that they put up to. There's also a line of trees there that are on, it's my daughter's house that she's building the apartment for me. Um a lot of trees with um, you know, so you can't see between the two properties.
I'm sure the neighbors will, you know, there's a fence there already, I'm sure the neighbors won't mind to, you know, seeing a good one, you know?
Yep, I agree.
Good fences make good neighbors. We have two building department memos, one for each application. Uh both signed by Joe Vanitucci, both just set forth the application and stating that there's no objection.
So a a couple uh meetings ago, we had an issue with uh granting a special permit, and it. Says we can only grant one on an existing structure, and we held to that. So I think we have a problem here on this one.
No, we did, if you remember, John, last month, you talk, you were talking about the uh the Tesla house on that.
We told him he has to build it and come back.
That was for an office, not an accessory apartment, last month, we actually.
Right, but but.
Last month, we did an application for someone to build an accessory apartment that wasn't built yet. We had that exact application.
Yeah, I mean, it says uh that we have. We may permit the construction of accessory dwelling within an existing single-family home, so. It's the exact same language and terminology, whether we.
No, cause this isn't within. It's an addition.
Well. That's a whole another problem, I guess, I would say, because.
They're not building the addition unless they have permission to do it.
Yeah, and that's exactly what happened with, you know, the Tesla.
No, it's not, that was that was creating a a home office, that's a different kind of application. It's the same, we had this application last month for another accessory apartment in an addition that wasn't built yet.
Well, in one case, we applied it one way, and another we apply it.
You're talking about two different statutes, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree, it's two different statutes, but the wording on them is exactly the same.
It's not an existing structure because it's not built yet, he has to build. Addition, it's not within, we're not coming out within like the office once said.
Right, alright, so so then that brings you to the fact that, you know. In R eighty zone in greater is where you can provide the accessory apartment in. The second floor of an accessory structure.
Hence the variance application.
Right, but we're in an R one twenty here, so I don't, you know, I don't.
That's why they're asking for a variance.
Yeah, this was the last month, I believe it was the Graham application at Hunter Brook Road. Yeah, this is an application for a special use permit for an accessory apartment in a separate structure on the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That was last month.
Yep.
So I I don't see that as an issue in this case.
Well, alright, I mean, at least maybe you don't agree that it. With me totally on that, but I guess it speaks to substantiality of.
Yeah, they may different be maybe a different issue as far as that's concerned, as far as moving forward, I don't see an issue with that. Uh do we have any public comment, Kira?
Yeah, great, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, I don't see any at this time.
Okay, so what's the purpose of doing it on the first floor as opposed to the second floor?
Can I answer that?
Sure.
I've been a resident of Yorktown for over fifty-five years, and I can't do, as I'm getting older, I can't do stairs any longer. You know, going up and down the flights of stairs, so my daughter nicely said, let's see if we can build you like a granny-type cottage, you know, little mother-daughter apartment. Um so it's really because I'm not gonna be able to do the stairs as I get older, that's the only reason it's on the first floor.
Now, the one issue I do have with this too, uh in keeping with some of what John was saying. Is that normally if we grant an accessory apartment, it's a permit for a period of three years, but. Period running from when, this place isn't built yet, so it would have to be three years running from the date that a C of O is issued.
Okay.
Anybody have a different opinion on that?
Well, would you actually have to do it if you do it from now, what is the expected completion date for? When when would the project be complete, when is the project, the projection?
Started construction would be the uh end of the summer um this fall, so I would say. Mid to late winter, maybe early spring, depending on the 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 winter that we have.
Okay, uh but I'm saying is I don't see the purpose of the issue, telling you they have three years to now, you know.
They would just have to come back.
They can't, they can occupy, there's a C of O anyway.
Right, well.
It doesn't become. Why cut it short?
Oh, that's that true.
I mean, it's not like we're experimenting, and we have to see how it goes, it's, we know what it is.
Well, I mean, I think that's why you're supposed to wait until the building's built to to issue the uh special permits, but. Um you know, I I I think there's another thing going on here that the size of this accessory building is. Potentially kicking in the eighty percent coverage.
Well, it's not what the variance is for.
Right, but just looking at the plan that I'm looking at that, you know.
But we I we can't make up what this application's for, the building department tells us what the variance is necessary, isn't it, they don't list the coverage area. They don't list the coverage problem.
The, eh is that the accessory coverage or the?
Yeah, so you have a shed in this accessory building, it can't cover more than eighty percent of the footprint of the main building, and just looking at your plans, I think. You're you're there, if not exceeding it, and Gordon's right, the building department should have flagged that if that's the case. Um. You know, but just visually, I mean, this this is an accessory structure because you're attached with a breezeway. That's written right in the code, that, you know, that doesn't count as making it part of the main structure. And this is a, becomes a very large accessory structure with the footprints, you know, in the two houses. So it's not.
Yeah, neither neither building department memo discusses the coverage issue. Billy, what do you think?
Well, I mean. John makes a valid point in terms of the coverages, because it is still an accessory uh uh building. Even though it may be attached by a breezeway. Uh. Do you know uh how big footprint of the residential structure is right now?
I maybe the architect can answer that, because I'm looking at the plans, I couldn't, I couldn't see.
Yeah, there's no dimensions on the plan with respect to the original.
Just give me one second, I can look up that information.
Uh I'm kinda looking ju- and he's while he's doing that, just looking at this scale drawing. And I think there is also a shed on the property that uh is not on this picture.
Joanne, is there a shed on the property?
There's a shed there. You see it at the top of the photo, at the top of what's on the screen now, it says shed.
That might be the neighbors, eh?
This is the neighbor's property, the property lines here.
In the Google, yeah, go ahead.
The square footage of the house would be, uh have to be eleven uh one thousand one twenty-five. In order for the nine hundred square foot addition to uh fall within the eighty percent.
Well, it's a it's a one and a half story house, so it's not just the living square footage, it's the.
Well, it's a two and a half four story.
Yeah, whatever.
So you got square footage on two different levels. So I I think the square footage in the in the main house is probably gonna exceed that one thousand one twenty-five.
It's it's the foot, the way the ordinance is, it's the footprint of the main building, not the square footage of the living space of the main building, it's a strange, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but so when I went through this with Joe, we had that there was thirty-three percent of these. Total square footage of the existing structure. It we did not discuss the footprint area, and I show that on my zoning.
And probably the reason why was that, that because. This particular section of the ordinance lies to an accessory building. And again, because you'd be connecting the bu- the that building to the main building by a breezeway. It's still considered an accessory structure. Thirty three thirty-three percent really has everything to do with the size, the accessory. Uh apartment relative to the uh uh. Size of the living space in the uh the main building.
Okay.
But uh what we're talking about here is not that, but really coverage.
So the principal building is eleven hundred um seventy-seven square feet.
Okay. So does that satisfy the eighty percent requirement?
Just about. Well, so there's a, I don't know that we've ever gone too much detail on this one, the the shed, the the deck, I guess, doesn't really count for anything in this. Uh it's usually an accessory structure, I mean, I wouldn't even, but you know, the the ordinance reads accessory building coverage.
Right.
So I don't think the shed counts at all, but I would say if, I mean, the the deck counts at all, hopefully, but.
And 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 let unless you get put out of the house, and you're gonna sleep on the deck.
But I think I was in the Google, I did see a shed, you know, or it looked like a shed there.
Is there a shed on the property, cause the Google photo could be old too.
I don't work. If that's an outdated image, cause I would typically note that on my plan, whether it was on the existing survey or not.
Okay, so you said it was eleven uh. What was that number that you threw out there, eleven something?
Eleven hundred.
Eleven seventy.
So you get.
Percent.
You get nine thirty-six.
Nine thirty-six, right.
So on the these the accessory building, the footprint of the building, it was like thirty-six by twenty-five or something?
Thirty-five by. Thirty-six by twenty-five.
Which is nine hundred square feet as reflected on the plan.
You're good by thirty-six square feet.
Okay, I'll take it.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Well done, okay. For penny, in for pound.
Told you you could not have a shed.
There you go, man, you got it.
Unless it's less than thirty-six square feet, then it's a closet anyway.
Going going back to what um. Going, going back to what um, you were saying before, John. I had an opportunity, I'm reading that uh, the Graham application and that accessory apartment was to be built into an existing building. It says here, this application is to construct an accessory apartment with a separate structure on the property.
It was a structure that they were remodeling, I think.
Right, but the structure was already
It was a barn or something like that.
But the structure was already there. I'm just, just a clarification. Wasn't sure if that has any bearing on it or not.
Well, I, I think it does, but uh, you know, I, I think the whole the whole concept that, you know, if you look at uh, those two paragraphs with the dwelling unit not being permitted in, in uh, an R one twenty zone as a separate building at all. It also says that, you know, even in the zone that it's allowed in by code, it's a the accessory is supposed to comply with all the setback requirements. You know, it's, it's not an existing building. We don't comply with the setback requirements. We're in a zone that specifically you know, laid out as shouldn't be there. I mean, at least at least, at a minimum, it's a very substantial set of variances, um, you know, or it's arguable that we're not in an existing building here to even grant it just yet.
I have a question with regard to the uh, referring back to the Google picture. There's a lot of um, trees on that side of the property uh, with the adjoining neighbor. Are those trees gonna remain after the uh, structure is put up? And uh, continue to serve as screening?
The big trees that are there, the native trees are gonna be removed and the um, line of screening trees would stay and be added to going further down.
And with, uh, where are they located though, uh, in conjunction with the um, uh, the proposed structure?
So I'm trying to share. I can't find that show all. There we go. So there are a line of trees here. Some of them may need to be removed, but we are good and we can replace those with with additional screening if need be, but most of these trees in the back here would all remain in the back of the property.
What's the height of the uh, the improvement gonna be?
So we are proposing fifteen feet nine inches.
Does that compare to the current roof line?
So the existing structure, I believe, is plus or minus um, twenty-eight feet to the ridge.
About thirteen feet shorter.
Correct, because this is the two-story space. Here you have a garage and then you have a second story above and this is the one story. So it's, it's uh, fits in with the existing dwelling. And I think it fits in with the neighborhood.
I'm looking at the photos and the house, the lot on the far right, that's thirty-seven oh five. That has a large building in the back. Or some structure of some kind, maybe a carport, I have no idea.
Yeah, there's a, there's a structure right here, garage.
The one on the other side too, this one over here.
That, look at how close that is to the fence line, to the property line.
I mean, there are similar structures on other houses around the same street. Looks like one of them even has a tennis court or something, I think.
I think that's a pool back there or over here.
No, next to the right.
That looks like a cover for a pool, I think.
Anybody on the board have any other questions? Still nobody in the audience, Kira?
No one in the audience.
Does Kira have any questions?
I'm gonna move the second application first. That's number twenty-nine of twenty-one. And that's application to construct an accessory apartment dwelling with side yard setback of five feet or minimum fifteen required and a combined side yard setback of twenty-five point six nine feet. Minimum forty is required and allow the accessory apartment to be on the first floor, where it's required to be on the second floor. At five twenty-four York Hill Road, I'm gonna put in the condition that it be built substantially conforming to the plan submitted. Now, this pertains only to requested variance, not to remainder of the property line. Do I have a second on the granting of that application?
Second.
All favor? Anybody? Then we move to the other one. Application especially for, for a proposed accessory apartment on the first floor, where it's required to be on the second floor. It's actually for the apartment permit itself. And that'll be for a period of three years, so I move that and we grant that application. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor? Okay, so those are both granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Hey gentlemen.
We're welcome, Joy. I'll talk to you soon.
We're gonna move back now to, where was it? Alex Tris, do you, does the board feel that they're ready to vote on it?
Well, I, there's just one, I mean, can I, are we allowed to talk about anything within that application at this point or is it just purely about?
We're not taking, we're not taking testimony, but we could discuss our
Well, the only thing that I, that perhaps is an influence at this point, and I throw it out there, is that the barn that was there back then is no longer there. The barn is gone. And that was a substantial structure. That thing was huge, man. You could park like six cars in there. It was monstrous. That's not there anymore. Does that have any bearing? Would that have any bearing on what we're looking at here?
I don't know if it does or not because the, the original decision doesn't really talk about that in the sense that that was the basis for the decision. They talk about it somewhat in the decision, but I haven't heard anything that changes what wasn't known then.
But like the guy came back and was it eighty-five, eighty-six and they were gonna uh, do some type of a home office in the barn? And the same concerns with septic were, were, were being addressed, but then that application was withdrawn. And now that barn doesn't even exist, so I'm not sure. Does any of that bear into?
It, it's, it's what you believe has bearing. I mean, you know, I, to me, I don't, I don't, I don't see what differentiates this application from the one we denied a couple of years ago. We have to hear them on their own merits, but we do have to look at what we've done in the past too.
I agree. I agree. I'm inclined to agree with uh, with Gordon on this. I think the principle of starry decisis applies.
Watch your Latin.
Oh, so I'm not sure. Okay, I'm good. The decision was made and there's gotta be a, a reason. I, I mean, you, you have to, you know, stay with decisions. There's got to be, uh, there can't be, you know, flexibility or, or never mind, I wanna make some money now. Uh, even though I agreed to something in the past and I just don't see any benefit to the neighbor, neighborhood. Putting, you know, sticking two more houses into the neighborhood. I, I've been by there. The green belt is kind of charming.
I, I also have an issue with, with the argument of, you know, give them a chance to present it to the planning board because that really takes everything out of the zoning board's hands. I mean, you, if no decision made, let's just let someone else figure out.
Right, right, right.
Well, I, I mean, another thing is even if, I mean, it's a proposal, but you're looking at building more substandard lots, you know, no matter what.
Yeah, I mean, the justification, oh, it was okay forty years ago. No, it's not okay. I mean, we're trying to get away from that.
And I mean, the only thing I could even think would be appropriate is if someone, you know, wanted to review the minutes of why these conditions were put in, but, you know, I think we tried to go down that road on the last similar application and we couldn't really even find minutes and, and, you know, so, I mean, he certainly didn't present anything that said, this is why they did it back then. And, you know, this is why that doesn't apply anymore. You know, to me, that's the only thing that would sway me, unfortunately. I mean, it's it's not necessarily a, you know, a, a terrible concept, but
No, and I don't doubt he's gonna be planning on building a very nice building, but that's not the point.
And then, you know, any other variance that was like this, right, where something was like this condition, right? This is the second time it's coming up. Maybe, maybe we have it on hundreds of properties, right? And now all of a sudden, everybody, you know, like
So, all right, so What do you, what do you think, Bill? What's your thoughts? Yeah, I, my problem is, is that uh, you know, there's gotta be some kind of legal argument. Other than and, you know, obviously, if you want to consult the town attorney and find out what standards there are. We could obviously do that, but my sense is that there's gotta be some kind of real legal argument. It's gotta be presented in order to overcome a decision of a prior board. And what I've heard from the applicant is one that basically says that uh, you know, the house, there's lots, lots with houses on it that are similar size. Although we know that uh, basically the subdivisions that, that were laid out, were laid out in nineteen sixty-one. The uh, the town board changed the requirement for lots to twenty thousand square feet in an R one ten zone in nineteen seventy-one. Okay, so that the lots that were present on Forest Road right now, unless they were done under some kind of flexibility or density standard, would not survive under the current zone.
Adam, are we off base in our thinking?
No, I don't, I mean, I don't think so. Ultimately, when you seek relief from a decision, there has to be some intervening change of facts and intervening change in law and intervening change in circumstance that justifies their departure. Uh, or else, and you guys are hitting, I think, the nail on the head. You're gonna set yourselves up for challenges to these things everywhere and then you're gonna be in a box where there's gonna be a precedent that had no significant rationale um, to distinguish it from any other. So you're gonna have a hard time distinguishing from another application. And then your hands will, as a practical matter, probably be tied. Because there is law on, there is law on that, that's for sure.
Yeah, well, there's a definite lack of any compelling reason to open it up. And I think without that, uh, my inclination is to vote no against, against opening it up.
I would make a note from looking at the screen that I see Mr. Greenberg has a raised hand, but we are closed and reserved, so we can't take any additional comments from the applicant. So I'm not ignoring his raised hand. We just, since we're closed and reserved, can't take any more comments. Anybody else on the board have any other comments? All right, then based upon what we've heard, I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose the uh, that we deny the application to remove the condition in the previous E B A decision that prohibits the subdivision of this lot at ten seventy-five East Main Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor? Say that application is denied. I think that covers our agenda for this month. I would move then that we adjourn to next month, keeping, uh, keeping everybody in mind out there that there is no August meeting. We have July meeting, but from July we then go to September. So I move that we adjourn this meeting to July. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
So now, so now with the July meeting though, is that going to be another Zoom meeting or, or are we looking?
Still Zoom.
They're not gonna open up the doors to the town hall.
Still Zoom as far as I know.
All right, cool. All right.
Thank you very much and happy zoning.